Welcome, everyone. The September 4th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is called to order. I'm Scott Hulopka, Chair of the Board. We will start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Bratty? I know I saw you here, Ed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Lilly?
Aye.
Ms. Munesses?
Aye.
Ms. Penaro?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
And Mr. Tennant? All right, we'll see if they can join us shortly. Will you now all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Bentley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes, and also it looks like Mr. Heckman just joined us.
Oh, great. In the August 28th email, you all received draft minutes from the July 17th meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review the draft minutes. Are there any corrections or additions?
Actually, Mr. Hulopka, I had one correction. Ms. Bensley, the notes from the public hearing, it had Ms. Kathy Wolfson talking about Petition 25-03. I think it's supposed to be 25-01. It's like close to the end of the meeting minutes for the public hearing notes.
Okay.
Because I know she sent in something in writing about it too, so I think it's meant to be 25-01.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, I was trying to pull up the minutes so I could see where it was, I can fix that. Do you know what page it was on?
Um, hold on, give me two seconds. Uh, nine.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Yep, we will get that corrected.
Are there any other corrections or changes? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. First on our agenda, we will have an opportunity to discuss and then vote on the Cycle 43 Water Supply and Sewerage Master Plan Amendments. As a reminder, this item was introduced to the Board on June 17th with a presentation by Mr. Andrew Brown of the Department of Public Works and Transportation. And a public hearing on the matter was held on July 17th. Staff of the Department of Public Works and Transportation are present tonight to answer any questions we may have as we discuss. Would Mr. Brown like to make any comments at this time?
No additional comments at this time.
Thank you. If that's the case, I will now open the floor for discussion. I would like to address each petition individually with a separate discussion and vote. Please note that while possible motions are provided based on the recommendations made by DPWT, EPS, and Planning, we are not bound by agency recommendations and may offer any water or sewer designations we feel appropriate. First up, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding Petition 25-01 for the Randallstown Islamic Center located at 3117 Rice's Lane? I am not seeing any hands. I am not hearing anything. If there are no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, and just as a reminder to the Board, these are recommended motions. If anybody has any modifications or anything after the vote, Mr. Hulopka and I, we can address that. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendation and reports for the Water Supply and Sewerage Plan Amendment, Cycle 43, Petition 25-01, to designate as recommended by Environmental Protection and Sustainability and Public Works and Transportation, W6 S1, as requested by the petitioner.
So is everyone clear on the motion and what's being proposed? That is the case. Is there a second?
Second.
We will now do a roll call vote. When I call your name, please say aye, yes or no. Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Bratty?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
It looks like he hopped off.
Okay, we'll come back to him. Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lilly?
Yes.
Ms. Munesses?
No.
Ms. Penaro?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Tennant? And is Mr. Heckman back on with us?
No, it doesn't look like it.
Well, the the motion carries one way or the other. So thank you. Next, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding Petition 25-02 for the Manor Shopping Center located at 3499 Sweet Air Road? Mr. Bratty?
I have a question for Mr. Brown. There are some other centers in that location. Is he aware of how they obtain their water supply? Is it the same as Manor Shopping Center?
Based on the testimony given, my understanding is that they have they have water supplied in a similar fashion, but I don't have any personal knowledge of how their water is supplied. I can tell you that there's no public water being provided, you know, via water pipeline in that area.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, saw a hand. Mr. Duval?
Yes, I asked the question earlier from Taylor, and we got the the email that this used to be a W3 designation similar to all of the other properties in the area. Do we know why it was changed to a W3 back in 2011? I I understand that we don't know why it went from W3 back to a W7, but why was it changed to a W3 in 2011? Was that because of the Exxon problem up there?
So let me clarify briefly here. The original designation change for for the properties in this area for W3 happened in 1985 as a part of the emergency cycle EM2, which was associated with groundwater contamination based on the review of the records. In 2011, it remained a W3. It did not change. That was just the most recent record that we had showing that it was still a W3 from that original 1985 change. And then the change occurred in 2014.
And and we don't know why it changed in 2014? What the the reasoning was?
We do not. I was unable to locate any records explaining the change.
Okay. And and all of the other properties surrounding it are still W3?
Uh, right. All the ones that were designated W3 in 1985 have remained W3 in that region. Not to to clarify, not all of the around surrounding properties are W3.
Ms. Munesses, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I had the same question. So there, so there was no reason that we could find for the change from W3 to W7 in 2014, you said?
That's correct. I was not able to locate the reason for the change.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Tennant?
This property is is currently one of the the few servicing shopping centers for a lot of the shopping and the grocery in the market. And they're currently using, to my knowledge, water being shipped in multiple times a week. Is that is that correct?
Based on the testimony that I heard in the petitioner's report, that that is correct, that water is being shipped in regularly.
Do we have any idea how much water that is?
I don't know the exact volume.
Okay. Got it.
Mr. Ray?
So, Mr. Brown, how are you?
Just fine.
How much would it cost for the county to rebuild a water supply line from point to point?
I really can't give you a reasonable estimate on that because the scope of that project is is way beyond just a napkin sketch as far we'd we'd have to consider that not just the length of the pipeline, but whether additional pumps, pump stations, other considerations would be required, but it would be, you know, a very substantial investment, but as far as the specific number, I can't really give you anything that would be meaningful and basically be a guess at this stage.
Can you give a sort of a lower ball estimate, at least a million, at least five billion?
I would I would say the orders of magnitude is probably in the in the 10 million plus range, but that's a, you know, that is a ballpark estimate.
No one's holding you to it, but just to give people as you said, a sense of the ballpark.
So, Mr. Brown, for us to approve this, it means that we will be putting the county on that a certain degree of duress to really build a pipeline, right?
That is incorrect. The designation change does not guarantee that a pipeline would be extended to the property.
Okay, so.
If I can clarify, though, it does, the designation is a capital facilities area, which typically would mean that it's for consideration by the county as a capital project.
Right, that's what I thought.
Mr. Duval, do you have another question?
Yes, I guess following up to that question, the the W3 only means that if they have, if water is available, that they can connect to it. Is that correct? It doesn't require that that a water line be put in?
That, yeah, that's more or less correct. It it basically means that it could fit within the framework of a conceivable capital improvements project that could be completed within the next six years, but it doesn't obligate the county to complete said project. And and the case in point would be that many of these properties have remained W3 for since 1985, and no such pipeline has been constructed.
And and if all of the other properties are W3 in the area, it doesn't it make sense that this property would also have access to that water, or is there? I guess that's where I am confused. If 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 the others are already W3, and this used to be a W3, why, why is it? Why should it not remain? Why should it not be a W3?
So I can speak to the DPWT criteria. I mean, basically, I, you know, I I wasn't a part of the conversation 1985 as the original designation change and why they deemed it a W3 then. And so when we look at any petitions now, we have to look at the current criteria that we use, and so it didn't meet the criteria for that we would that would satisfy Department of Public Works for changing it to a W3, given its location and our capital improvement projects. But that's not to say that there aren't, you know, outside considerations. I can only speak from the perspective of of DPWT.
So I can add, this is Justin Hall with DPWT as well. Looking at the definition of the W3, you know, I'll read that real quick for you is areas in which water and sewer facilities are required and are possible within the framework of the Six-Year Capital Program, subject to annual budgeting, neighborhood petitions, determination of health hazards, and negotiation of public works agreements. As Mr. Brown said, we do not have plans for water service to that area running from our current system, so that was hence why we had objected the W3 in our recommendation.
Mr. Ray, you have another question?
Yes, so, yes. My other question is, so what is in the best interest of the county here?
In terms of the designation, is that what you're asking? So, you know, again, going back to our recommendation from the Department of Public Works, we do not support a change in the water designation and recommend the property retain the current designation. Department of Planning does not support the requested change to W3. And then the recommendation from Department of Environmental Protection Sustainability was recommends the county conduct a feasibility study to look at costs and potential service areas for a proposed water line extension. So that was the three recommendations from the three county agencies that do these reviews.
And Mr. Ray, the Planning Department determined that this is well beyond the Metropolitan District as well as well outside the urban rural demarcation line. Both of those criteria are important to us when we're looking at requests to extend sewer and water. And that's why we did not support this change of designation either.
Thank you.
Ms. Munesses?
Yes, so the other, I guess, residential properties designated as W3, are they on well water, or are they public water system?
My understanding is that, you know, all the properties in this area are on well water, and then some exceptions where where water is being trucked in.
Okay, so.
There are no public water.
So the the petitioner is, I guess, asked probably, well, I'm assuming they want the ability to access well water instead of having to ship it in. Is that why they want the W3 designation?
No, they their petition, they state they have they have multiple wells, some of which are are not giving the yields that they are looking for, and they're having to supplement their water supply with trucked-in water, and their petition is looking to the county to help solve this water supply problem, though a specific solution wasn't wasn't necessarily proposed in in the petition.
Okay, so they they do have the option of well water, but it's not enough to supplement to fit their needs. So they want to be considered if the if the other surrounding area, if it if there is a possibility that public water is brought into the surrounding areas, they want to be part of that.
That's my understanding as well. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Hinton?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I think from the testimony, the ladies were saying that they're not able to run like some of the restaurants anymore that are that were in the shopping center. So I think it was also like a business concern because the Four Corner Shopping Center or the name of that shopping center is like one of the only anchors in that area. And without having the proper amount of water, it threatens the sustainability for that shopping center to even come. Now, the community, of course, didn't want to change this, that, you know, the history of it by, you know, the threat of public water and what that could do by bringing in more houses and other infrastructure, but at least my vantage of what I took from it, if we if they don't solve the problem, the shopping center is going to be gone, and they're not going to have any economy there at all.
Mr. Johnson?
Just a quick question for the Planning Board. Is there any way that you would see that in couple of years, if they submit it, resubmit it something in a couple of years that your your opinion would change? Or is there anything right now that would cause your opinion to change that could be done?
Who are you directing this to?
Planning Board. I mean, the, um, either Mr. Brown or Mr. Lafferty, either one.
Unless the Metropolitan District is extended to Jacksonville, Mr. Johnson, or the Erdel Line has moved that far out, I do not, I can't speak for future planning directors, but I think our position is likely to remain the same.
Right, I mean, likewise, if there were, if there's no change in the criteria or capital improvements projects, then we wouldn't recommend a designation change.
Mr. Bratty? I think you're still muted.
On the last meeting, we received testimony from the Community Association that they didn't want to change in the designation because the expenses would they would have to incur in paying for water and anything else that was attached to bringing water to the area.
Mr. Ray, do you have another question?
Yes, not really a question, but just a comment. Listening to what Mr. Hinton just said and what Mr. Hall, he gave for three options that are right here, three, seven, or do a feasibility study. Instead of just voting to deny or to approve, can we really go over the feasibility study to see what needs to be done or what can be done? Wait for the recommendations. Because remember to what Mr. Hinton said again, businesses, we cannot just allow the area to be stagnant forever. We need to attract businesses. We know that Baltimore County is actually losing people right now in businesses, so anything that we can do to sustain that will not be a bad idea. So can we then recommend a study instead of just voting yes or no, to deny or to approve?
So actually, Mr. Ray, yes, I was going to say the same thing. We can do that as a motion rather than a motion to deny and have a motion on that first because Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, they were the ones that did recommend that, so I'm happy to make that motion first to see if that carries, and then if it doesn't, you know, we can have the alternative motion. But I'm happy to do that unless there's any more discussion from the Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lilly?
I was just quickly looking through the, it's 30,000 gallons that she has to bring in every month. I was looking through the original article. Just thought you'd know.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Tennant?
So first of all, I think that's the 30,000 gallons seems like a dramatic amount of water to be bringing into that center, especially the amount of services that are being provided to the community from that center. I'm not sure how sustainable that is. And to my my knowledge, the shopping center is already not performing that well, from what I've heard from the the anchor tenants like Safeway is paying a really below-market rent, I think, due to some of the restraints with other getting other users in the center, with other uses in there. So I would imagine that on top of that, having that bill to be able to truck in that much water is going to make it very difficult for that shopping center to be able to thrive and keep up with the community needs with having to truck in water, not have ability to get water if they ever did get public water to that area.
Any other comments, questions? I'm not seeing any hands raised. If there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Thank you. And specifically, this is for Petition 25-02 Manor Shopping Center. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendation and reports for the Water Supply and Sewerage Plan Amendment, Cycle 43, Petition 25-02, to designate as recommended by Environmental Protection and Sustainability, W7 S7, no change to the existing designation with the condition that the county conduct a feasibility study to look at costs and potential service areas for any proposed water line extension.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We will now, now that we have a motion and second, we will do a roll call vote. When I call your name, please say aye or nay. Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Bratty?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Still not with us. Mr. Heinel?
Oh.
That was a no?
It was a no.
Thank you. Mr. Hinton?
Just for clarity, we're voting no is saying that we believe that it should be W3.
No, we're voting no change.
Voting no is.
Voting, we're voting no change to W7 and S7, but the county has to conduct a feasibility study to look at the costs and potential service areas for a proposed water line extension.
So we're saying no at this current time pending
Correct.
feasibility study. Okay.
Correct.
And so if you wanted to vote for W3, you would have to vote this one down.
Right. Okay, no.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Lilly?
Uh, no.
Ms. Munesses?
No.
Ms. Penaro?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
No.
Mr. Tennant?
No.
According to my count, the noes have it. Ms. Bensley, do you agree?
Yes, I concur.
Do we have a second motion?
It moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendation and reports for the Water Supply and Sewerage Plan Amendment, Cycle 43, Petition 25-02, to designate as recommended by Planning and Public Works and Transportation, W7 S7, no change. W-seven, S-seven, no change to the existing designations. So this vote to clarify is no change, but no feasibility study either.
All right, we will now have a second round of voting. Um, hope everyone is clear about what this one entails. Mr. Ray?
You need a second, Mr. Halupa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
Uh, I, Mr. Chair, this is, I would really like for us, you know, I know this is already known for, for the vice chair to really repeat what people voted no for, for the First Amendment. So that people can understand, I, 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 I think some people voted no without understanding probably not what they were voting for. Now, the feasibility study, the feasibility study is, is, is something, you know, we are being flexible. Instead of just throwing it out of the window, we need to do that to see what the county can do in the future. Instead of just depriving that area. And Mr. Hinton, I agree with your recommendation, with what you said earlier. That if we do nothing, we are going to deprive businesses in that area. We are depriving growth for the county. So I'm just making sure that those who voted no, the First Amendment, they understood what they were voting for. It means you voted against, against the feasibility study.
So is there an option? I, I, I do agree, Mr. Ray. Do you think there is some confusion potentially around what each motion or, or vote means? So I, I would say, me personally, like, I think it should be W-three. I don't think we need to waste, I, I mean, you're gonna do, they're gonna do a feasibility study regardless. Um, on, on what they have to do. So is there an option to, 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 yeah, to do W-three with a feasibility study?
Okay, so um, to answer both your questions, I can make a third motion, but we do need to like go through this vote first. On if there's any board members that just want to do straight no change. So once we get through this, I can definitely make a third motion on recommending a change as well as a feasibility study.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So just to be clear, the current motion and second is to keep the current um, designations and no recommendation for any sort of study.
Correct.
Mr. Ray?
I'm always number one. Um, can you come back to me, Mr. Chair?
You would, Mr. Ray, you would vote no based upon your previous comments?
Yeah.
Do you want me to come back to you or do you want to?
Yes, come back to me.
Okay. Mr. Bratty?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Mr. Duval?
No.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Heckman? Not what, what is it? Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Lilly?
No.
Ms. Munesses?
No.
Ms. Penaro?
No.
Mr. Schulman?
No.
Mr. Tennant?
No.
Mr. Ray, back to you.
No, no.
Uh, the second motion fails. Do we have a third motion?
It moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board, um, okay, I'm gonna have to think on the fly here. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board, um, recommends the change from W-seven, S-seven to no change to S-seven, but a W-three change as requested by the petition, by the petitioner with the condition that the county conduct a feasibility study to look at costs and potential service areas for any proposed water line extension.
Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
We'll start at the bottom. Mr. Tennant?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Penaro?
No.
Ms. Munesses?
Yes.
Ms. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
No.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Bratty?
No.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
The eyes have it, nine to four, according to my count. Thank you very much. The third motion carries. Finally, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding petition twenty-five oh-three for the Kessler Tora Boys School located at eighty-four hundred Park Heights Avenue? Are all talked out from the other one. I am not seeing any hands raised.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Munesses?
Okay, just, um, to clarify, this property is requesting sewer connection outside of the Erdle?
Yes.
Yes.
So would, would the Erdle be moved or would they get an exception? Or would it just be like carved out to include their property?
Would, it's in the metropolitan district, which enables them to have sewer and water, even though it's outside the Erdle. Uh, similar to the Rice, Rice's Lane issue that you addressed in the first issue. Uh, the Erdle line does not move because sewer or water is extended.
Is there any other questions? Does that clarify your, answer your question, Ms. Munesses?
Um, yeah, and I also had another one. Um, what did, where are they getting their water from? Is it public?
Hmm, I thought it was currently well water.
They have.
Oh, no.
There, there's an existing public, there's existing public water.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, clarifications, comments? Uh, did I see, Ms. Lilly?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, this was a weird one where the, they were getting access to water, but not sewer on that property. Like, it was kind of strange that they could have access to the public water, but not the sewer. I, I may be wrong, but I think I remember that.
That, I mean, that is correct. They have, they are connected to public water, um, but they're still on private, on-site septic, um, which that situation does happen on occasion.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ray?
So, Mr. Brown, what is, Mr. Brown and uh, Director Lafferty, what is your position?
The position of the Department of Public Works is that there's no objection to the sewer designation change, and we support the water designation change because there is existing water on site.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Ray, do you have an additional question? Or you're just hands still up? Okay. Not hearing or seeing anything, uh, do I now have a motion?
It moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendation and reports for the Water Supply and Sewerage Plan Amendment, Cycle Forty-three, Petition Twenty-five dash oh-three, to designate as W-one, S-three, as requested by the petitioner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Now do a roll call vote. Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Bratty?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lilly?
Yes.
Ms. Munesses?
Yes.
Ms. Penaro? Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Tennant?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Uh, that concludes this part of the meeting. Um, I'd now like to turn things over to Director Lafferty for a couple of comments.
Um, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want, uh, wanted to, first of all, welcome everybody back to the schedule. Uh, it's gonna be a busy fall. Um, one thing that I had not necessarily intended to address, but will is that uh, we have determined that our hearing room actually is set up for hybrid. Uh, so there'll be further conversations about how we can accommodate, uh, even during in-person public meetings. Uh, the public who is virtual and wants to participate or attend the meetings. Um, we had, had the equipment in place for a while, but it was not functioning to our, to our knowledge, so we were not using this hybrid system. Uh, Taylor and Courtney Crystal are going to be following up to see how we manage sign-ins, sign-ups and, and the scheduling. And we'll be speaking, of course, to you, Scott and Emily about how you want to proceed. Um, so that'll change the dynamic of the meeting somewhat in the future, but I think staff would still recommend that public hearings be held in person. And we have the virtual, uh, the ability to virtually allow people to also be present. Um, and we can get into more details later as, as that unfolds. Um, I also wanted to comment on some legislation that's been pending involving historic preservation in the county. Uh, as uh, Mr. Lupka and Ms. Munesses know, we have a Landmarks Preservation Commission that is uh, tasked with looking at requests for changes for properties or even the designation of historic properties and sites. Uh, they follow uh, strict standards from the Secretary of Interior as well as got national register guidelines. Uh, there are a couple of bills that have been introduced that would radically change the way they operate. Uh, we have been in uh, touch with the council about how we can best protect the work that they're doing and their well-being as an entity. Uh, all of their meetings have been virtual and that may pivot now as well. Uh, but it, we take the preservation of historic sites and property very seriously and, and want to ensure that uh, the commission continues to function in the professional way they have. Uh, there's another bill dealing with demolition that we are also engaged in discussions with Councilman Patoka, who introduced the bill. Uh, again, wanting to protect properties, but also being reasonable about how we go about it. Uh, my, my last comment is that we are seeing a flurry of legislation and we're continuing to try to be responsive and take into account concerns that planning board may have uh, as these issues unfold. So if you're tracking or seeing any piece of legislation to give you any concern, please communicate with Taylor. Uh, and we'll try to do our best to keep you informed. Um, the last comment I'll make is that on October sixteenth, uh, we will have a, a community input meeting on the capital budget. This is part of the annual process of beginning the capital budget process. Um, and it historically has been in person, excuse me, with agency representatives uh, there to hear the public comment, the community input. Um, we, once again, we just send out notice to the agencies and looking then to engage you as well as that process unfolds. And for those who were not on the board in January of last year, we spend January into February, looking at the capital budget, making a set of recommendations. Uh, and I presume, uh, unless the, there's action taken on the water and sewer amendments before that, that there would be a recommendation for the funding of a feasibility study because it is currently not budgeted. Uh, it cannot be paid for with metropolitan district funds because it's outside the metropolitan district. So to conduct a feasibility study for the extension of sewer and water or water, excuse me, to Manor Shopping Center will require funding in the capital budget in the future. Um, so I just wanted to add those comments, but again, welcome you back and uh, know that it's gonna be a busy fall and I look forward to your engagement on all these issues that we have. Unless anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions, comments for Director Lafferty? Uh, I just want to add, I don't know how many people were following this. Um, Governor Moore just had an executive order looking, having the state to look into increasing housing production. In particular, looking at uh, ways of using state property, but also trying to encourage local county, counties and local jurisdictions to, to meet certain goals. Um, and uh, Director Lafferty, have you guys looked at the State of Maryland Housing Report that came out in the summer?
I have looked at it uh, briefly, Mr. Lupka. I've not digested the document now. I'm sure Mr. Johnson can give us a summary, though.
I'm sorry?
I'm sure that uh, Mr. Johnson could give us a good summary of what the department is proposing.
Um, it may be something, you know, we've talked about having uh, other agencies or discussions. This may be something we want to take a look at. I mean, I've looked at it some. I don't entirely understand all, I mean, I know that the work was done by the University of Maryland Center for Smart Growth. Um, so they, you know, and they did some analyses of projected, projected needs both statewide and for local jurisdictions. Um, I believe the number for Baltimore County is for an additional sixty-five thousand housing units over the next twenty years. Again, I'm not quite sure how they got there or what those numbers mean. Um, but I just wanted to alert people to that and uh, Steve, do we know, is the county housing department's report coming out anytime soon?
Uh, I have not heard that it is. I don't know any date for its release.
I've, given the state thing, I was just curious where that was as well. All right.
I'll follow up with Director Hickey and find out if he has any more information on it.
All right, thank you. Um, so our next meeting, I believe, is, is it Tuesday, the sixteenth?
Thursday, Thursday, the sixteenth, um, and then Tuesday, the thirtieth.
Thursday, Thursday, the sixteenth, um, and then Tuesday, the thirtieth.
Oh, okay. I, I knew there was, one of them was off, so.
Okay. Right now, we're looking at virtual for Thursday, the sixteenth, and in-person for Tuesday, the thirtieth. I'm sorry, the eighteenth.
Okay, right. Uh, look forward to seeing everyone virtually in a couple of weeks. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. See you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.